Good Friday morning, guys. My name is Jerry Miller and welcome to Real Talk. This is an insider's guide to real estate life and the pursuit of happiness. We are live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth of the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network presented by the Yes Team Realtors. Judah Wickhauer is our director. Keith Smith, the EP Executive Producer and star of the show. I have a half a gallon of milk here, Keith Smith.
Fat-free.
Fat-free, nature's promise, organic, fat-free.
Only the best.
You were so kind. He texted me yesterday because we do some texting throughout the week about, you know, topics on the show.
Some.
Yeah, some. It's like 1%, 2% or skim, Miller.
Yeah, you know.
Do you have a preference?
Uh, no, we're on the same page. Our chemistry is working.
You like skim?
I'm a fat-free guy.
Me too.
Because if I go home, I'll be an extra 20 pounds.
Same with me. It's like, we do enough of the other stuff. Why should we add it to this part of our lives, right? Is that how you feel?
You know, all I know is I'm trying to keep those pounds down and.
You're doing a good job, right?
Eh, not really.
Are you using the stationary bike at home?
I am, definitely. Yeah, yeah. It's just, I can't lose this last 15 pounds. I just don't know how to, it's just.
I mean, it's probably going to come down to diet, right? You've changed the diet.
We're gonna change, we're gonna re-change that diet here in about a minute. You know, Mrs. Smith isn't around. I probably wouldn't have been able to get away with this without.
Well, Yona is the fittest woman ever.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I mean, is that just, uh, natural genes?
You know, I was thinking on the way in today, Yona is in.
I'm pouring the milk, Keith. You already have some, right?
I'm ahead of you, brother. I'm ready to go. Uh, I was thinking on the way in, um, you know, it's, Yona's up with our oldest daughter, who's gonna have our second grandchild the middle of next week with a C-section, planned C-section. And, you know, Yona and I have been together for 35 years. We worked together for 35 years. And normally what happens is about somewhere between four and whatever hours after she leaves, I kind of fall apart. I'm feeling really good. I haven't fell apart yet, so.
Wouldn't you get back into the bachelor life?
No, no, I, 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 you know.
What do you mean, fall apart?
You know, I just, you know, I gotta, she does, when I say she's my better seven eights, I actually mean it. She is my better seven eights. Now, I gotta do all this stuff and, you know, I haven't lost my stuff yet, though. I'm really proud of myself.
Good job, Keith.
So far, I'm proud of myself. You know, I'm very proud of myself, you know, but, you know, you know, I got, I had a horrible night last night. I don't do well when she's not around me. And, and she's the love of my life and I miss her. I've already missed the hell out of her and it's not even been 24 hours.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, without doubt.
Keith Smith, Yona Smith, look at that. A relationship we, we all can strive for here on the I Love Seaville Network.
It's not all rainbows and puppies.
Well, I mean, it's work, right?
I mean, she has to live with me, so it can't be all that good.
And you work together.
We work together every day.
And you work together. That's what makes it really impressive, is you throw in the work piece as well. Um, okay, do this. We have a lot planned for the program.
We do.
People are wondering why we have double stuff. You have, I have double stuff.
I got single stuff. I'm a single stuff guy.
I have double stuff. For those that are listening and not watching, it's iTunes, Spotify, Apple Podcasts. Is it an Oreo? Um, what's the premise here? It's like a taste-off or a challenge of some capacity?
I don't think it's a challenge of anything like that. I just, you know, we started this on Tuesday and, you know, the show kind of went off on a different direction. And, you know, I just, you know, we talk a lot of real estate. We talk, we're gonna talk a lot of stats. I got them in front of me, but, you know.
Cookies.
You know, I love cookies, right? And Yona literally just, I just gave Yona all the credit in the world and she deserves every second of it. But she literally hides them in the house.
She leaves and immediately you buy two packs of Oreos, one of double stuff, and you choose the very incognito way of eating these cookies in front of cameras with microphones when you know your family watches the show.
Never said I was smart.
Smart man over here, my friend Keith Smith. Smart man.
Never said I was smart. But look, you know, I just, I just wanted to have fun, right? You know.
I love that about you.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm a dunk guy.
I'm a dunk guy.
Right.
The Michael Pleckers of the world hate these things.
And so I just would love people that are watching.
I like these.
I love them. You know, are you, do you twist at all or are you just full?
I go straight up plunge.
There you go, there you go.
And I do a double plunge. We were talking about that.
Well, we got, we got a little later on the show. We want to talk to Tony. I know Tony's got a busy day.
Can I eat the Oreos while I'm?
Do whatever, brother, you do whatever you want to do.
Can we do one together?
Okay, well, I gotta open it up. And then I don't want all that whole cookie thing in my teeth, right?
Well, I worry about that. You tell me if it's in my teeth, I'll tell you if it's in your mustache.
We'll hook each other up.
In your mustache. Is that a deal? Do the Oreos get in your stash?
Little bit.
I saw the photo of you circulating on Facebook with you not on a stash. Dude, you were sitting over there drinking a beer, younger days. You were jacked, huh?
Little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Little bit, little bit, yeah. Well.
You secretly liked when that photo was going around Facebook. Yes, you did. You're doing that look. Yes, you're doing.
No, no, no. The purpose of that picture was for me to publicly apologize to my wife.
For, oh, because she said, because you said she's never seen you without a mustache.
And I was wrong. And she was right.
That's right.
And that was the whole purpose of that. It wasn't any other reason than that. I was like, damn, she's right.
Well, that's how you met then, right?
That's literal, that was, that was literally within the first couple of weeks we knew each other.
And then you just decided.
Can we eat cookies now? Thank you.
I'm double dipping here.
Oh, well, you're a better man than me.
I usually wait about three seconds, let it get a little absorbed. Uh-oh, it's starting to crumble, Keith. I'm eating it now. Starting to crumble, Keith.
Oh, God. So.
I spoke up.
So I don't do a whole dunk. I do a half a dunk.
Oh, I like.
No, 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 no.
Get in there.
No, because half of it is soft, the other half is hard.
So you like the mix of the soda?
I like the mix. To your health, brother. One show, didn't we do whiskey? Now we're doing milk and cookies.
We should do something every show like this.
Oh, good.
It's fun. We both enjoy it. Gives us something to talk about on top of the real estate and the life. I'm reaching out to Tony. JDubs, it's ringing now.
I mean, the first thing we gotta ask Tony is his opinion on.
The cookies.
On, on.
I think they're in my teeth, Keith. Are they in your teeth? Don't look, don't look. Tony's on the line. Tony, you're live Charlottesville, Central Virginia. I see one of, uh, your colleagues on the Alamo County Board of Supervisors watching and some of your, uh, your colleagues that work for Flavanna County watching. And, you know, we have critical things to discuss, like getting out of the pandemic, like budgets, like housing, like booming Flavanna County. And you know what? Let's put all those things to side, Tony. And frankly speaking, why don't we talk cookies, my friend? How does Tony O'Brien like his Oreo cookies? That is the question.
It's an important question.
First of all, I don't like the double stuff. I like.
See?
Thank you, Tony.
I don't, but I do have a really good Oreo story to tell you guys.
All right.
So, uh, I actually grew up in Spain, in Barcelona. And one of the things that, uh, that I loved was Oreo cookies. And, uh, they didn't have them there. This was in the seventies. And they didn't have the cookies there. So whenever visitors would come or whenever we'd go and visit the States, uh, I'd always bring back a bag of Oreo cookies. One time I even got a bag of Oreo cookies for Christmas. Uh, that's how much I loved Oreo cookies. Uh, and yes, I would dunk in the milk. Uh, I would do the twist and I would typically scrape the cream off by, uh, sort of just rolling it under my teeth. And then I'd enjoy each side on its own. So I'm a big.
So that, so that, that's a, that's a process, right? That's a huge, I don't, I can't wait that long, Tony, right? But that's a process. You gotta pull it apart and then you've gotta go ahead and, um, dude, I like that. So let me ask you a question. How do you, do you do like a French press coffee?
Um, you know, I used to, but I've kind of gotten away from it. I'm, I'm, interestingly enough, sort of like the way my father was when he was my age. Uh, he switched from coffee to tea and I've been drinking a lot more tea than coffee.
Good for you, man.
And when I drink coffee now, I like the lighter version. My wife, she drinks a French coffee press, Seattle's best. Uh, I swear you can make a spoon stand up on it. But, um, it's a little too bitter for me. In fact, I poured a little bit into my coffee that I had this morning and I was like, I just don't like this coffee.
Good for you, man.
So, but, you know, a good latte is always nice.
So Tony, Tony is an Oreo lover. We got one. He's a twist, swipe, single stuff, swipe off the filling, double dunk. You're dunking two separate cookies. And then the last thing on the cookie thing, you drink the milk when you're done, right? The whole glass, right?
That's the best part.
That's the best part. Exactly right. I don't do that any longer because I can't drink milk, but that's too much information about myself.
Well, let's put it this way. We're glad we're doing this Zoom then and you're not drinking milk. So, hey. So, uh, so Tony, thank you for coming on. I know you got a busy schedule trying to run a business and, and, and put in 30, 40 hours a week, uh, on Flavanna County business for us as a board of supervisor that covers the lake. A couple of things, you know, we started a couple of shows ago. We were talking about broadband and particularly rural broadband and how Nelson County is in 2023 is supposedly gonna have all the citizens have accessibility anyway to, to broadband or to fiber. So can you just give us a high level, uh, where's Flavanna County at that as far as broadband? And then we'll kind of jump into a couple of different things as we go along.
Sure, absolutely. And I did watch that show and it was a great show and I'm glad my colleague Jesse is on. Uh, I watched him last week and, uh, have to say that he did a bang-up job in, in explaining some of the challenges and how, uh, broadband was developed in, in Nelson County. I'd like to say that, uh, we, we, we were ahead of him on this, but we're probably following on his footsteps. Similar to the program that they've created with Firefly, uh, and the outgrowth of that program that, uh, uh, you know, has, has really taken the area by storm. And I just remember when I was getting started, I was thinking, wow, this is fantastic. I was, uh, happy to, happy to participate in the process of bringing, uh, Firefly into Flavanna. I think we were second on the list, uh, and, um, Central Virginia Electric Co-op covers about 60% of the county. Um, and I'd probably say territory-wise and I'd probably say maybe as far as people, about 75% of the county. They have, uh, done a great job so far penetrating the area, um, where they have customers so far. They're growing into Cunningham and soon they'll be starting at the lake. And they're targeting to be done by the end of, say, 2022, uh, roughly. So that's not that far away when you talk about it. Prior to that, if you were in Flavanna County, you were really limited to, uh, DSL if you didn't live at the lake. And if you happened to live in a larger subdivision, you might have had Comcast. And, uh, those services, uh, well, certainly Comcast services has, has improved over the years, but they were challenging from time to time. And of course.
They're challenging in Charlottesville, in the city Comcast.
They're challenging, yeah, exactly, uh, exactly. But, uh, when you look at, uh, the importance of rural broadband, it, it's an understatement to say that people, when they're looking to buy a home, ask about, do you have broadband right now? And the importance for a community like Flavanna to have broadband means basically at the end of the day that we're going to be able to attract and keep residents, uh, that, that are bringing high-paying jobs because they're working from home. They are, uh, bringing their families here. They're paying taxes in Flavanna. And that gives us a competitive, competitive edge over other counties that don't have that level of penetration in terms of broadband. You know, really, Central Virginia Electric Co-op under the leadership of Gary Woods, uh, I think is creating a model that, uh, other, as Jesse spoke last week, other utilities should follow as well, too. Because there's a high cost of penetrating, uh, into rural areas. And even with all the money that's being granted by both state and federal governments now, in part due to the response of coronavirus, it's still a costly venture.
So you come from this from a very unique perspective, uh, you know, not only are you an elected official, you know, a board of supervisors for Flavanna County and representing Lake Monticello, but this is your business also.
That's what I love about him, right?
So let's talk, let's, well, you know, not getting too geeked out on it for particularly for us that, that don't have the kind of understanding of this as, as you do. But what's the benefit of this, you know, we were talking about this PPP, this private-public partnerships. Talk about a little bit about how that played a role in getting this, this Firefly going through the county and getting this broadband. And then more importantly, from your perspective, I mean, really, how can Green get on board and do it quickly? Does that make sense?
Well, right, no, I understand what you're saying. Um, you know, it's sort of from a historical perspective, let's, let's just back up a little bit. When you were looking at bringing in higher levels of broadband, you saw communities and, and counties and cities create, uh, essentially broadband authorities. And those authorities were more or less created to create a partnership between the government and typically a local business or, or, uh, a larger business that was trying to expand into other areas. You would think, okay, terrific. And, you know, we want to bring this service out to the outreaches of our suburbs, for example. Well, that could be back in the day, a really, really significant investment, still is. And so how do you get a company to, to take that risk, to go out there and establish its, its broadband services in an area where they don't necessarily have the type of concentration of people, nor the, nor the guarantee that they will have customers? And so they're taking a huge financial gambit. The rural broadband authorities helped to even that out by making an investment from the local governments into those companies that were trying to bring that service out there. Now, of course, with the CARES funding and, and with the importance of COVID and the realization and the pressure that has happened, uh, both at the state and federal level, to bring real dollars to the table, you're now able to, to, as a business, go out and attract the dollars that allow you to make that investment. So you can have that, that, that period of two to five years where you can build out your infrastructure. And on top of it, you can start to attract and retain those customers that you need to keep your business while being relatively certain that should the technology or the environment change, that you haven't put all your capital at risk on a huge bet to bring a service out to a community that desperately wants it. So it's a balance between the demand, uh, that's out there and the capital investment that needs to be made. And public-private partnerships, rural broadband authorities help to make that happen. Added into that was, you know, I think what you saw happen and what Gary Woods did a really good job of, when he came out and he spoke to local government officials, he said, for Central Virginia Electric Co-op's own needs, we are gonna go ahead and we are gonna bring fiber out to all of the households that are part of our cooperative here. And we're gonna make $100 million investment and we're looking for a partnership with local governments. I think his timing turned out to be really great. It was just before COVID started. That really helped a lot. Uh, but on top of it, he was making at that point in time a minimum, he convinced his board of almost $100 million, while at the state level, at that point in time, oh, I think we were only investing a million or $3 million, uh, at the state level for all of the communities in Virginia. So that gives you a sense of just how large, for broadband and rural communities.
What a disconnect.
For broadband and rural.
So my, my partner in crime has finished eating his Oreos. So I'm gonna let him, I'm gonna let him ask a question.
Uh, Tony, you make, uh, complicated stuff very approachable and easy to understand. That's a skill you have. Let me throw this topic to you. Flavanna County, Flavanna County is booming. You guys seem to be pro-business. You got some nice development in the pipeline. People can't afford to live in Charlottesville, which is another positive for Flavanna County because you're so close to Charlottesville and this epicenter of employment. You got, you got quality internet in the pipeline, uh, pun intended right there. So here's the question for you. If this growth and this boom, um, goes as expected, what's the flip side of the coin? Do we have the infrastructure in place to handle it? And I want to relate it to, say, a place like Croze. Croze boomed and now you got a lot of leadership over there saying, we don't have the infrastructure in place to handle this massive density that's come with Old Trail and all these people wanting to live in the area because of the good schools. The, the discussion is made to become a town for more leadership. We handled that, uh, on Tuesday. We, we, we decided that wasn't probably a good idea for them. So this topic to you, Tony, anywhere you want to go with this, is Flavanna County primed for this boom?
Well, I think we are, I mean, thank you. First of all, I think that we are really trying at the board level and, and at the community level to, to look forward and see how we can make Flavanna a better community across the board, uh, and a, and a wonderful place to live and work and play, as we say. And we have, uh, you know, in, in partnership with Louisa County, but also on our own efforts, you know, really pushed to build out the infrastructure. It's always difficult when you're talking about infrastructure because you're balancing future needs, uh, against taxpayers' dollars that they're paying today. And so, for example, uh, when I first started on the board, uh, the county had just opened up a high school and there was a lot of debate in the community about the cost of that high school. And, you know, whether we should even open it after having built it. Yeah, it was an $80 million investment and that, that seemed extravagant at the point in time. But realistically, the cost of building a new school at that point was, if you looked at southeastern, uh, United States, was in that neighborhood. We got past that. Now we're making investments into bringing water to Flavanna and that's been something that I fought really hard for over the last seven years to make sure that we get that infrastructure in place so that we can have a balance between businesses and residences so that you maintain an attractive balance in terms of the, 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 the tax base and, and where the money is coming from. And so that people, um, aren't feeling like, oh, Flavanna is way too expensive from a tax perspective. And you hear that a lot. And so that's the kind of argument that you see when you're essentially looking between, telling the taxpayer that you don't want to tax them too much, but also investing in the growth. And, you know, certain communities will have a lot of assets already in place, but it's, it's the same old adage. Either you invest or you fall behind. Counties are businesses in the sense that they compete to attract residents. And the more attractive we can make our county to new residents, uh, the more we can grow. It is a balance. Uh, absolutely, it's a balance. We saw that huge growth out in the Croze area, Croze areas, as you said. Uh, we saw the huge growth over the last 15, 20 years with Lake Monticello. And we have been pushing with both BDOT and with our businesses and with the water infrastructure. We have a lot of power in the area. Um, you know, we're now working to consolidate parcels of land to make our community very attractive for companies to move into. And we've had some real, uh, some, some really good companies start to move into Flavanna County to, again, add to the tax base and, again, to make it an attractive place for people to live. So, uh, you know, do we have all the answers? No, of course we don't. But are, are we working on the, on the right track? I think absolutely we are doing the right things there. And, uh, and I'm proud to be able to serve with a board that I, I think sees that vision across, uh, across the long term.
So I'm so glad and Jerry and I's chemistry is kind of kicking off. Maybe it's the sugar from the Oreos.
I think it's the sugar from the Oreos.
Who knows?
And then Yona is a couple of eight states away from us right now. So you got a little more liberty over here, Smith.
Shh, don't tell Yona. Uh, you know, I, I'm so glad he asked that question because I, as you know, I come from this from a different perspective. I've been in the county, working in the county, been active in the county since 1987. And, and it's, it's, you did a great job of kind of articulating how we've changed. Because frankly, it wasn't always like this, the way your board is functioning now, right? In some ways, some time back, it wasn't really any different than what's happening in Charlottesville at its city's, city council level where the, the board wasn't, you know, working as a unified body to move the, move the ball forward. So I, I thank you for doing that. I will tell you, I live at the lake, as you know, and, um, my Comcast sucks and I can't.
I concur. I, I second that.
I can't wait.
Mondays.
I know that.
On this network.
Yeah, it's crazy, man. And, and we've got.
It's just inconsistent.
Well, it's inconsistent. And, and I need to ask you this question because I can't get a straight answer from anybody about this on Comcast. So I got the business package, right? We've supposedly, I'm not smart enough, but I bought the 200 up to 200 down speed, right? I thought it was gonna work well, but I'm, I call in on Monday from the house and all of a sudden I'm firing like great on all 12 cylinders and then dead. Is there a reason why that happens? Or do you want to move on?
You didn't, you didn't think that you were gonna be troubled with Comcast?
So, so, uh, I, I know Tony low enough to know that we're gonna move on to a different subject. But I've, I've been told it's a funneling thing, right? The more people that use it reduces the speed.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Right, right, absolutely. One of the difficult things for ISPs to do is to try to balance the, the, the level of load that they're getting from all of their customers. I mean, they build their profits off of overselling their pipe. And when I say overselling, what I mean to say is, yes, they're playing for capacity, but they're playing for not 100% capacity all of the time. They're essentially planning for, you know, say 35, 40% capacity. And how people use their services at different points and times of the day can make a huge difference in terms of how you see that.
And I'm gonna echo that in real world, Tony, because there's a project, a project, a home that we just closed and, and up behind the airport. And I was calling the, let's call the internet provider. I won't use particular names. I said, hey, look, I need to know what's going on on this property because we're about ready. You know, my client wants to put a contract in. What's the upload speed? What's the download speed and so forth and so on? And their answer was, is we don't have service to that. I said, yes, you do. I'm looking right at it. You literally, I'm literally looking right at it. It's in the house.
I can tell you this, when we used to have that Comcast.
That was weird.
The Comcast business package you're talking about to run this, literally, we used to have that. And then we switched over to Ting as the ISP.
Yeah.
They 5X'd both those.
Yeah.
The upload and download. And it made a huge difference.
So I guess from my.
Sure, yeah. And I mean, that, that's the technology of, of delivering, uh, the service across light versus delivering it across copper.
Got it.
You know, at the end of the day, Comcast, a lot of their infrastructure plant is based on copper. Yes, their back halls are now fiber, but when you get pure fiber to your location, you know, you're traveling at 886,000 miles per second, if, if my physics math serves me, versus the limitations of sending an electrical pulse down copper and repeating that. So that's, that's a huge difference.
That's the answer I was looking for.
There you go, Tony, Tony, Tony.
You know, you didn't have to do that whole face thing. You just could have.
Tony's a smart dude.
You just could have did the physics math and everybody would go, okay.
Dude, Tony, if there wasn't COVID right now, I'd give you a fist bump after that answer. That was a hell of an answer.
But here's the real question. When the hell am I gonna get it to my house so I can switch over to the, fit over to fiber?
That's what you want to know.
But more importantly, when that happens, is it a realistic expectation? What I'm experiencing now goes away.
Well, you know, again, two parts. One is, yes, you will have, uh, fiber probably, uh, I'd say probably late 2022 for the most of the lake, but, um, maybe a little sooner than that, but soon. The second part of it is, uh, uh, from what I've seen so far with customers that have Firefly in the area, if they've, say, gotten a 100 meg package, 100 by 100, which, you know, in many, many cases is absolutely sufficient, uh, for your average user. Uh, I see speeds that range, you know, in the 60 to 80 megs down and, uh, 40 to 50 megs up, even though it's quote synchronous, there's always, again, that balance in terms of what's going on at the ISP level. And again, for most people, that is way, way, way enough bandwidth to meet your needs. Now, you can be in that same household and if you start walking around and testing those speeds with Wi-Fi, that's gonna depend on the, on the equipment that you have in your house. You know, the further away you are from your access point from your Wi-Fi, uh, the less speed you're gonna get. So, uh, and if you put a repeater, a lot of people will use repeaters instead of mesh networks inside their house for wireless Wi-Fi, yeah, every repeater just cuts down on that bandwidth even further. So, you know, part, part of the answer is, yes, you will have it, but make sure that you have the right infrastructure in your home, uh, to make sure that you're able to get that bandwidth.
Before Jerry chimes in, there's a, this is a real estate show after all.
Yeah, here's a question I have for you. Maybe we're on the same question. Is it the same question?
Go ahead. I don't know. You're gonna, I'm gonna drink coffee. You ask.
Once the fiber comes, what does that do to increase property values in Flavanna County?
Uh, I was, I wasn't going there, but.
You don't, you don't think they tick up?
I, I think they will.
At the lake?
But, but.
Oh, absolutely. And well, and not, I mean, the lake, again, we've had the broadband. So would we see a huge tick up just because of fiber there? I don't know that you'll see it at the lake, but certainly, uh, when you compare buying a residential, I'm sorry, buying a, a house in the rural area of Flavanna versus a house in Green. Yes, that's, that's probably worth $10,000 bucks per home, I bet.
Easily, easily. That's probably conservative.
And so the reason.
Yeah, absolutely.
The reason I was asking it, again, it's a real estate show. It was a little bit different. Actually, I was gonna go there in the second part of the question is what you did. But, you know, I get asked all the time, you know, when is it gonna come? When is it gonna come? When is it gonna come? Because in, you know, honestly, in, in my hearts of hearts, we'll probably go to a hybrid, but we're, I don't think we're ever going back to the, the way we've functioned pre-pandemic. I don't know if Tony has an opinion on that, but, you know, I think some people will go back into the office environment, but the work from home.
It's a freaking public utility now.
Well, that's, that's a whole different issue.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm curious of Tony's thoughts. I look at it like running water or electricity, having quality internet, especially during a pandemic?
Absolutely. And, and I, and I, and I agree with Keith that I think you are seeing a change. Employers can now, um, and they've, they've been able to see how their employees can work remotely without affecting their productivity. Uh, in some cases, of course, increasing their productivity, uh, and maintaining their profits, uh, with those workers, you know, which again is important. So being able to provide that flexibility, uh, especially in the sort of gig economy and especially, you know, as you see millennials and Gen Xers, uh, really almost demand that, if you would, really almost demand that, if you would, as, as a perk of working for you. I, I agree that you're not going to see the same level of importance being placed on your having to be at work. And that again is where broadband comes in because if you have good broadband at home, that ensures that you're productive. You have bad broadband at home, then you're, you're going to have more challenges.
So let's talk real estate market, Lake Monticello, right?
Ha, smoking house.
You know, it, it's, yeah, it, I, I'm literally stuttering because I don't even know how to start with these numbers. So when I did the prep for this show 24, 48 hours ago, there was only 10 homes on the market at Lake Monticello. And the number, I ran the numbers again this morning, early this morning. There is 12 now. So we picked up two. But in that same period of time, we sold three, three went under contract. So we're going in the wrong direction, right? As far as inventory, as far as inventory goes. So in our line of work, we call this the absorption rate, right? How many units are coming in? How many units are going on the contract? Um, so, you know, just, just, I, I mean, I'm stuttering. The last 24 to 48 hours, because that's usually the, the narrowest window you can look at, takes time to get contracts posted in the system and so forth and so on.
Sure.
We, 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 we picked up two listings, put three on the pending.
Down one.
Wow.
Down one.
Down one.
I mean, we're not, and that, I, I just, you know, I'm perplexed that, that, you know, Jerry asked me the question before he came in. So how we can, how can we increase inventory? We're all trying to figure out the way to do this. And I wish I had a magic wand or an answer to it.
Well, here's the thing, Tony. Here's the thing is my, I'm on this supply chain, Tony, and my part of this, my part of the supply chain is to get guys like Kim and Yona listings. But how does someone in the supply chain get listings for people who need listings to sell when there are no listings to be had?
Well, I will say Keith is a kind of an expert at that. And one of the things, in fact, I was singing your praises this morning, Keith.
You sure it wasn't Yona's? You sure it wasn't Yona's?
Well, both, both of yours, but we were talking about your upcoming grandkid here. And, uh, and, uh, and I just, uh, I'd said that, you know, Keith is just doing an amazing job and being so connected and plugged into all levels of, uh, you know, the real estate community, uh, whether that's in, in, in affordable housing, whether that's at the development level, whether that's just that selling a residential home. And of course I know, I know you and worked very diligently to make sure that Flavanna has a balance of growth against, um, you know, uh, against, uh, or, or in, I don't want to say against, but in combination with commercial growth as well too, because you know, that's really important for the tax base. And you've created relationships and worked over the years to build those relationships so that, uh, when, when, when you have a developer coming into the area and you're talking about growth, people can see the long-term vision and say, here's how we, we are going to do this and here's why we need it. And so I think over the years, we've seen Flavanna, um, be able to be more accepting of larger developments. The, the, what's going in at the intersection of 53 and Lake Monticello Road there is going to be fantastic. Almost 300 homes there. That's a great boost from that standpoint, um, as well as highlighting the importance that we stay ahead in terms of the infrastructure. And that, that again is where water really comes in, water and sewer really comes in. So, uh, counties have to balance that out. Flavanna has one negative in the sense that they don't have a lot of active wells in the area. And so we really do need to bring water in from the James for sustainable, long-term growth. And that is, uh, something that has, as you know, we've been pushing for, for almost 40 years. And it's a reach right now. That's really helped to ensure that we can attract both businesses and new residents and give them the, the, the home that they're looking for.
Well, um, thank you. I, I don't take praise well, but thank you very much. I, I, you're, you're, I, I take, I took it to heart. I, I'll tell you. And I don't like to toot my own horn, even though we sit in front of these cameras for hours and, and hours a week. One of, I think one of my crowning, crowning achievers, things I'm most proud of and is getting that roundabout in. That, that was.
Saved lives.
Saved lives. Yeah.
Saved lives.
Saved lives. Yeah.
Well, I think you're, you know, you like that and you especially like getting.
Oh God. My wife is watching. She doesn't know anything about that. Thanks, Tony.
Speedy ticket on the roundabout?
Dude, I, I mean.
How do you even do that? You gotta have great, you gotta have great handling and great, uh, on that truck of yours.
No, 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 no.
He was so happy. He was just doing donuts around.
No, no.
I can see him doing that, Tony.
You're going to, Tony, you just got my butt in trouble. Thanks, Tony. No, I was, uh, they, uh, they changed the speed limit going in from 55 to 45, which if anybody has watched me talk about this for decades, was is the speed need to be reduced and stupid, which would be me.
Remember the old speed.
Remember the old speed and I'm buzzing along and the next thing you know, cop pulls me over and I very gladly accepted the ticket and I told the cop, you know what? Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to frame the ticket and, and, you know, that's, that's a win. I'll, I'll be, I'll be happy to accept the ticket, a speeding ticket if it saves lives. But yeah, so the other thing on that project is 80,000 square feet of commercial coming in, which is super huge.
Yep.
Super, super, super huge.
And I mean, it's not, I mean, yes, you've got the commercial development. You've got the residential development happening there. We approved 175 apartments.
Correct.
I think that's our, really our first apartment complex in Flavanna County. You know, that, that may seem like a small thing, but when you talk about residents that live at the lake and that want to maintain and live in that community and not be in a home any longer, uh, having the availability to live right next to the lake in an apartment, uh, that's affordable, uh, that's, that's a big, huge plus.
I can add more to that.
So it's creating that community living. Um, let me just finish the thought here real quickly, Keith. That intersection, that roundabout, yeah, that, that's a huge crowning achievement. My next door neighbor was literally killed on that intersection, riding his bike. When you put in a roundabout, you eliminate that left-hand turn that's so dangerous. You increase safety and yes, the speed limit changed, but that was part of it because people would zip right through there and just down the road, a quarter of a mile down the road, I know someone else who was killed right on that road. So we take growth and we take the safety of our roads really importantly. It was actually one of the more surprising aspects of my job as a supervisor was understanding how important that relationship is between development, growth and safety.
Yeah. So a little, a little news on that particular project, um, and you'll eventually see it running through your system. I was able, the, the purchaser of the affordable, excuse me, the purchaser of the apartment, multifamily apartment, you know, through a little bit of coaxing on my part, they're going to be kind of knocking on your door for, for a tax incentive, for lack of a better term. And they're going to make a commitment that those rental units will not exceed 60% AMI.
Nice.
So.
What 60% AMI in Flavanna?
Well, AMI is.
Well, I know what AMI is, but what's the number? What's?
So AMI for Flavanna is the same as Charles, about 90 grand.
Really?
Yeah. But, but when you start, it's a complicated formula and it, so when you start adding number of residents in it, the number drops down. The, the bottom line is, um, you know, somewhere around the 800 to a thousand dollar range for a two to three bedroom apartment.
It's good.
Which would be great. So that, that's, that's really super. And they're going to make that commitment and.
Well, and as your commercial grows in Flavanna, you're going to need folks working within the commercial businesses that need places to live.
Yeah.
And that's what you're doing with these apartments. These apartments will all do that.
We're super, we're super excited. We're not, of course, we have to go through a process. That's going in front of Tony's board. It's going to take a bunch of, a bunch of the board of supervisors take a bunch of time, but I, I feel confident that it's the right thing and, and we get support for it. So one quick link back to numbers, just 2020 versus 2019 overall numbers at the lake. 2020, there was 324 units sold, uh, 2019, 283. So we sold 41 more units year over year. Days on market, which is a big number that we look at.
What's that change?
So 2020 was, um, 13. 2019 was 34. So we dropped. So we were selling.
That's not healthy.
We're selling them 21 days faster.
Yeah, that's not healthy.
Yeah. And you know.
And, and, and look back another year and that was, that was probably at 60 days and two years ago it was at 90 days, right?
I ran out of time this morning, Tony.
Well, what's your prediction for 2020, Keith? You're the pro at this. Do you think the?
2021?
For 2021, sorry. What do you think DOM and, uh, and price point for 2021?
Well, let's go back to price point. Uh, we went up 10 grand year over year. Uh.
2019 versus 20?
Yeah. 2020 was 233, uh, two, 2019, 223. So it's a 10 grand increase, which is a, that's a healthy growth.
Yeah.
No, but that's not excessive. You know, it's not just double digit inflation or double digit increase.
It's the DOM that's not healthy.
Yeah. So I mean, that's a, that's a debate that's realtors and folks will have for, for, for quite some time. Where is that magic number? In my mind, it's 90 days.
Yeah. You said it was 90, right?
Well, that's my opinion. Some people think less, some people think more.
I mean, it's tough at that price point, which sometimes is a starter price point in central Virginia, where a first time home buyer is having to compete in a multiple offer situation. That's a brutal scenario.
Yeah. You gotta have skillsets to help people through that. To answer your question, I, I think this stays this way through.
Do you think so?
Through 2021. I don't, I don't think you see these numbers going back. It may float around, but I, I can tell you, we, we will, as far as DOMs go, if, if this time next year, we see that number over 30, I'll be surprised. I think we're going to stay somewhere between the super anemic, the 30 days. We're, we're nowhere going to be near.
The Fed's going to keep these interest rates for extended period of time.
That's a two-part thing. I think you're going to start seeing the bonds going up personally. But I think the, the feds are going to keep on buying mortgage backed.
I heard Tony want to jump in here. He has something on his brain. I can tell.
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, interest rates are low too. But again, you know, I was going to add into that is that the, when you look at the differential in terms of the pricing and the value for the dollars that you get in Savannah, overall, it's, you know, it's 30, 35%. So, um, you know, one of the problems is that when you allow your, your prices to essentially outgrow income, uh, growth in terms of wages, then houses become unaffordable and, and, uh, you know, it's pretty tough when you're looking at a starter home in Charlottesville at $350, $400,000 and you compare that to a larger home for 225, 235,000 dollars. You put in the lake where you have all the amenities there. Boy, I mean, there's no comparison. I mean, you know, are you going to live in a condo in, in Charlottesville versus live at the lake? It, it depends on the type of living that you like. I understand that, but, um, in my opinion, it just, it's so attractive.
It's a no-brainer.
And the pandemic just ratcheted that up.
Oh, a hundred percent.
So 12 units are on the, on, on the market as a, um, 46 are impending. That, that's just like a ridiculous ratio, right? And the media.
You guys need more inventory.
Well, we're, we're gonna, you know, but.
More inventory, Tony, more tax dollars for the county right there.
Well, we're, we're trying to.
With the balance.
Yeah, with a balance, but as far as inventory, new inventory is concerned, you know, that particular project, it's actually 325.
It's great.
Units and that project's.
Just down the pipeline though.
Not that far down the pipeline.
Was it you said?
We'll start pushing dirt the end of this year.
Okay.
Right? You know, probably first quarter of 2022 start, actually.
Phase one.
They're selling. Yeah. This is going to, this, this is going to kind of go simultaneous, the way this project's done. It's, it's gonna, the, the, uh, multifamily and the single family and the commercial at this point, based on contracts. I can't disclose the details. It's all pretty much going to happen concurrent. Cool.
Yeah. And but we also have, we have in, I mean, the good news is that there are many subdevelopments and that are in Flavanna that are already approved, that have roads on them, uh, and that have lots available. So there's a lot of new building opportunity. You know, the squeeze there has been on the builders themselves with COVID and getting the, uh, getting the materials and the laborers and the pricing. So that's been another double squeeze that you have, uh, as well too, is, you know, you, you may have the inventory in terms of the land and the approvals already. But now you've got to get the builders in place and pretty much everybody I'm talking to, they're just, you know, totally slammed and they can't keep up with the work they're already getting. So, uh, you know, that's, I think, uh, with, with, hopefully in the fall, coming out of COVID with, uh, labor force being able to catch up with work. Uh, and hopefully with the prices staying stable in terms of interest rates, uh, we'll, we'll continue to see some, some of these developments fill out that are currently, you know, at 35, 45%. Uh, and so that's great. You know, where you.
Tony.
Both sides of the story there, right?
No, no, I just looked at the, the clock and I promised you to get out of here by a quarter of 11 and it's 11. So, so, so I know you got a busy day. Anything you want to wrap up?
Tony, you're good people, man. You're good in this, this setting, Tony.
Anything you want to share?
Appreciate it.
Anything you want to share before, uh, we say goodbye? Something about what's going to happen this year? Do you want to share anything about that?
Yeah, it's, it's election year again. So, uh, I, I do plan to run again and, uh, it's been a real privilege and honor to serve on the board this far, thus far. I, I still have some goals that, that I want to achieve. In particular, I want to see the water get pushed through and, uh, and I just, you know, I love Flavanna. I want to see Flavanna grow uh, in the right direction and, uh, I want to see, um, our, our neighbors and our community be really excited about the future. And, and I'm just, again, so honored to be able to be a part of it. Uh, and, and I, and I will add one last part, which is I never understood when I got into public service, how many people give and serve to their community. Uh, and I have to say that, that I have wonderful neighbors that are doing that all the time in Flavanna. So, yeah, I love Flavanna.
Before you, before you get away.
That's news right there, right?
Yeah, that's a reason I kind of let him in.
Neil, Neil, Neil Williamson, you're watching the show right now. I see you watching Neil. Um, Tony just announces his, uh, intentions to run again. We'll play that again on our show right there. That's news. Tony, I'm, I'm happy for that. You're good for Flavanna.
One, one last question.
I appreciate it.
One last question. And if I put you on the spot, we'll just move on. Per week or per month, how many hours do you put in serving Flavanna County?
Well, um, you know, probably, I mean, you, you exaggerated a little bit. Um, I'd say per month is probably in the 60 hour range, 70 hour range, uh, not as much as some of my counterparts do in Almaral and, uh, uh, and in the city. But, uh, again, it's, it's a level of growth that we have. And, you know, the more that we do, the more time and energy that it takes. But again, it's a privilege to be able to do that. And, and, uh, again, I look at it as public service. I think over the years, we've given public service a bad name, but there are a lot of really great people that do a lot of good work to make sure our communities run well, that our governments run well. And, uh, you know, I never served in the military, but, uh, I, I really do look at this as my opportunity to give back to, to my community.
So I know you're under exaggerating because I talked to you more than that a month. So that's not true. You know, you probably, you know, if you factor in everything.
Do you think it should be a full-time job?
Oh, without doubt.
I think it should too. How about you, Tony? You don't have to answer that if you don't want to. Do you think that it should be a full-time job?
I don't, I don't know that we're quite there yet, but I'm sure someday we will get there.
Well, Flavanna County maybe not, but I think in.
Almaral and City of Charlottesville.
City of Charlottesville should be.
Yeah. Oh, and, and some of my counterparts in Northern Virginia, not only is it a full-time job for them, but they have staff members as well too. You know, they get paid $90,000 a year, plus they have five or six staff members.
That's exactly right.
So yes, it, it can become a full-time job, uh, as you grow. So.
Well, there's, there's also some restrictions that the state does and, and Sally Hudson last year tried to, to put through a, um, uh, change at the legislation level, at the state level to allow the local jurisdictions.
To pick.
No, no, to increase their salary.
Oh, okay.
So there's a cap. There's only so much money that, and I don't remember what that number is.
Well, it's 18, um, City of Charlottesville and 20 for the mayor and Almaral County is even less than that.
Yeah. So Flavanna is even less than that.
Yeah, which is BS. Yeah, it's BS, I think.
Yeah. Well, I mean, again, the board votes on, on its own salary. Uh, Flavanna vote, uh, Flavanna did not increase the board salary. Uh, I think for almost 15 years, we, we actually did increase it last year. Uh, I think I got all of about a $600 a month pay raise, uh, from that. And I'm not, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not complaining about it.
Of course not. But I'm trying to make a point, Tony, that the amount of time, even if it's whatever numbers that you said it is.
I mean, it's almost like indentured servitude with the amount of time he's putting into it.
And I, and I exaggerate. It wasn't $600 a month. I'm sorry. It was $100.
It was 600 for the year, Tony, right? Yeah, it's, and Almaral County got the same thing. Their board of supervisors, I was talking to my friend who was running Gerard Smith. He goes, yeah, they got a $50 or $53 a month raise.
So, so they didn't even, they don't even raise up to a living wage.
No. Uh, Ann Malik and the colleagues are making like $16,000.
I know that.
Michael Payne said on city council on Tuesday, and he got a little, it snowballed on him.
Yeah, you and I had a little.
Part of it snowballed because of the I Love Seville network. Um, he said on.
I was texting you feverishly on that.
Dude, I was just trying to help a man who couldn't afford to change his spare tire.
I know.
He said, I'm the dais. I cannot afford to change my spare tire on my car.
He was trying to make a point.
I don't know. I don't know if he was trying to make a point. I don't know if he's, well, if he was, that was a tough, tough way to do it.
Yeah, it was. Tony.
Well, again, I, I don't do it for the salary. I do it for the community.
Without a doubt, but you have the ability to work and do because of the way you're set up, but some.
Cause he's an entrepreneur.
But so the problem is, in my opinion, to really do your job well, 20 hours a week, 40 hours a week, whatever it is, depending on the jurisdiction. You know, and it's pretty hard to do that and plus hold a full-time job, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying. And that's the beef with it not being full-time. That's why I love Tony coming on the show because he's honest. Who can do what these people are doing besides folks like us or retirees?
Retirees, that's it.
We control our schedule. I control my schedule. So do you. So does Tony.
Mrs. Smith controls my schedule.
But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. But if you want a more, a more younger, diverse.
That's what I'm saying. It has to be a full-time job.
It has to be a full-time job.
Yeah. Or you're only going to have Keith Tonys and Jerry's and retirees.
That's exactly right. Well, speak for yourself. It won't be me.
It might be me.
Tony, thanks, man. You're, you're, you're a trooper. Thank you for everything.
Thank you guys. Really appreciate it. Keep up the great work.
Have a great day. Have a great weekend, my friend. Get my best of the family.
I barely mean this. You're a lot of fun. You have a good one.
Okay. Great. Well, have me back.
Oh, wait, we will, we will. Uh, Tony.
Well, he's running for office.
I know, I know. That's what he says. Running for office. Uh, we will say this, Tony, we'll play that sizzle reel on our show. Keith Smith made, made news again. Um, you made news Tuesday with the retiree.
Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about that.
I mean, that blew up.
I got numbers on Augusta and Waynesboro. We could talk a little bit about.
You got that sizzle reel for I Love Seville that we can give props to Keith and Tony for? So Tony, we'll play your announcement for board of supervisors on our 12:30 show.
I kind of want to get back to the real important subject of the show.
Do you think he wins?
Uh, depends if anybody even runs against him.
Well, you you have the pulse of that county.
Well, it's an interesting thing. And if Neil is still watching, I wanted to talk Oreos, but we'll talk politics, I guess. Um, just to funk, not politics per se, but no, no, mechanics.
Okay, okay.
Because this is, they have to, meaning the jurisdictions, and I know Flavanna in particular, they have to reset their their boundaries this year. Their voting districts boundaries, right?
Okay, so that's a big deal.
Well, that's all now changed because it's, the system has changed, right? I just don't want to get into the thing. And it could be, and Neil Neil will probably correct me if I'm wrong, which I know he will, um, but I think the deadline to do that is somewhere around June, right? That the jurisdictions have to reset their voting districts, right? And I think the deadline to announce the run is somewhere around the same time. So there conceivably could be, and I may be off base here, but there conceivably could be, let's say Flavanna County makes the decision to go from five to seven districts, just to pick a thing or or six or whatever it is, re redraw the lines, however that process is gonna work. They may not have anybody running for that those seats. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's interesting. We have to keep an eye on that.
Jesse Rutherford, welcome to the broadcast. We love when you watch Jesse, um, board supervisors, Nelson County, um.
Oreo cookies. Any feedback on Oreo cookies? Or everybody's talking politics and business?
Quentin says, in their defense, I have problems with boundaries as well. Quentin, that's funny.
Uh, that was good, actually. And it's true. That's why it's so funny. So, uh, yeah, you know, I was hoping to have a little fun with Oreos. We'll see how, we'll see if if that picks back up at the end, uh, at the end end of it. I I do, I do have a little bit more news to share.
Oh, Tommy.
In reference to the Thomas Jefferson, uh, Community Land Trust. No, no, we're not, we're not quite there with our little marriage yet, but, um, I've been doing this line of work for thirty five years.
I thought you were gonna talk about our telephone.
No, that's your job.
Okay, we should, we should talk about the telephone.
We should.
Now that the press release is going out.
Okay.
I approved it. Did you approve it?
Yeah, sure.
Come on. Susan's been texting me.
I've even read it. I just, that made me remind me. I just got a text.
I just got a text too.
Stupid, approve this thing.
Text as well from Susan Stein.
Good lord.
She's texting both of us and she knows we're doing a show.
She literally knows we're doing the show live. I'll have to talk to that girl.
No, 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 I like it. I like the Hutzbushy shows. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, I've been doing this stuff for thirty five years and I don't want to geek out too much, but I had some, I had a, you know, I want to give a super shout out and a super positive, uh, thumbs up and kudos to Almarle County, right? And I don't want to geek too much out on this, but we are, we, meaning the land trust and Stanley Martin, are working together on providing affordable housing units uh, to Spring Hill. That's that project on Ivy and twenty, right? Or Avon and twenty, excuse me, Avon and twenty. Anyway, make a very long story short, um, the proffers that they signed, and everybody knows what proffers are, it's a promise, affordable housing. And there was some interpretation language stuff going on in there. And what was happening here is the land trust is purchasing these units from Stanley Martin, and we're immediately going to market and sell them. So it becomes a pass through at the table, right? So we're, you know, on that end of it. And, uh, you know, the initial reaction from the county was you have to go back through because through the approval process of the board, which is many, 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 many months, um, which we would not have been able to move forward on it from our end of it. And I had a thirty five, and Susan and I had a thirty five minute conversation. We requested a what's called a zoning administration determination that what we were doing would work. And thirty five minutes later, they said, yep, you're good. Got to, we're gonna get an email. We're gonna sign contracts and hopefully put them on the market in the next two weeks to sell some affordable housing units in in, uh, in Almarle County.
Awesome.
And it's and it's scalable. We can go up to sixteen, eighteen units over there, plus a project we're looking at, uh, Ann Malik's area in Croze and.
Congratulations. A lot of hard work. That's big time.
Well, a lot of hard work for a lot of people, but I I was, um, flabbergasted. And it was, I was like, good, have a great weekend. I gotta go.
I gotta get the hell out of here right now.
Stop talking.
Is that what you're thinking?
That's literally what I want.
Let's not ruin this. Let's go.
We're done. We're done. I was, oh, I had all my notes. I was ready to fight for it.
Don't talk, Smith, go.
That's exactly right. It was like, I was like, I'm texting Susan. Let's shut up. Let's get off the line. Let's get off the line. Thank you. Bye bye.
Uh, so we also have some news.
Yeah.
Um, and Judy, let's mark this down as a sizzle reel here. We can start it right now if you want to take the time.
Getting fired?
No, you're not getting fired, but you're certainly very much a part of this. Um, Charlottesville. Here's the news. Charlottesville, Virginia, we're very excited to make this announcement. The, uh, I Love Seville Network has partnered with, uh, with your organization.
Sure.
Um, the Thomas Jefferson.
The land trust.
Thomas Jefferson Land Trust.
Community Land Trust.
And Community Land Trust. And we're gonna make, um, an effort to raise a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You heard me correctly, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a piece of land on Tem Street, off Tem Street?
Correct.
Okay, off Tem Street.
Tenth and West.
Tenth and West in the City of Charlottesville.
Correct.
So on the twelfth of February, it's a Friday, from ten AM to ten PM, myself and my good buddy here, Keith Smith, we're gonna sit here and for twelve hours, we're gonna try to entertain you in a telethon type of environment. So twelve hours live on this network. We'll have musicians, artists, agents of positive change.
Oreo cookies.
Local celebrities, Oreo cookies, maybe some Boto's bagels and a lot of maybe some Marie Bett.
And alcohol.
Alcohol, yeah. And we we need your help. We're gonna, we're gonna make an effort to raise a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. How cool would it be if we could somehow raise a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fifty dollar increments?
Sure.
What if three thousand people in central Virginia show how much passion and how committed they are to affordable housing? And if three thousand people in central Virginia gave fifty bucks, how awesome would that be?
I mean, that's awesome. So what, those who are familiar with our national project, it's literally the same, you know, it's the same thing. Not only is that we're gonna put affordable housing units at 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 around two hundred thousand. Our goal is to get below like a one ninety nine sale price. That's our goal. Our goal, and I think we can achieve it.
And how many can we get if we get this land?
Five.
Five. That's tangible for you. Five under two hundred K.
Five.
In the City of Charlottesville.
Correct. And
That's big time.
Yep. And they, uh, will also be net zero too through our partnerships. So not only is somebody can get in at it around that that price point, they have to meet a bunch of criteria, right? They have to be eighty percent AMI or under.
It's legit affordable housing.
There's a legit, there's a process through that you have to go through to do that. Um, and they won't have an electric bill.
No electric bill.
No heat bill.
No heat bill.
Yeah.
Um, under two hundred thousand in the City of Charlottesville.
Uh, let's not, I don't want to, I don't want to over promise.
We'll say ballpark.
But if we can raise this one fifty, I I easily think we can do it.
So it's Friday, February twelfth, from ten AM to ten PM on the I Love Seville Network. It's gonna be presented by Yes Realty Partners, um, and a number of people in this fantastic, fantastic community. We're gonna ask for your corporate donations, and we're gonna ask for individual donations from private citizens. If you make a donation of fifty dollars during this telethon, you will get in the running for a prize bundle.
Bunch of them.
And myself and the fabulous Susan Steinmark are putting prize bundles together where on the fifteen minute marker, from ten AM to twelve to ten PM, every fifteen minutes, we give a prize bundle away.
My job is just to sit here and and strap in.
Sit here and talk. That's all you gotta do.
So to quote Greg Slater at our board meeting yesterday, he goes, you know, it's worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars not just to hear that damn Yankee accent for twenty four hours.
So this is gonna be hugely successful.
Yeah.
We'll have, um, links through Venmo and through Totum that will show on air that you can donate to the telethon.
Please do.
I'm calling all cars in Charlottesville and central Virginia. The same commitment and effort we did to save fireworks in central Virginia. We're gonna raise a hundred and fifty K on Friday, February twelfth, from ten AM to ten PM, to buy a piece of land on Tem Street, the City of Charlottesville. And that piece of land, the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust will build five homes.
I'm gonna make this even worse on you.
Okay.
Anything that goes over, we've got another piece of property that's under contract for that same dollar amount that can put six of them on in the same area. Put a little pressure on you there, Miller.
So this, I'm seriously, everybody that watches this show, I ask very little of you that watch this network. On Friday, uh, February twelfth, I'm gonna call in every single favor from every single time over the last three years where we've busted our ass and put good content on this network for your benefit. We have been busting our ass. And I'm gonna ask on Friday, February twelfth, that three thousand people give fifty dollars to affordable housing. And we're not gonna make this any more freaking talk, but we're gonna make this actual freaking action. And we're gonna build property in this city that's gonna make a difference for 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 people's lives.
Without a doubt.
You heard? We're gonna do this as a family and as a community.
So we have some great acts like John Durth coming on. I'm just, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I'm kind of teasing it a little bit.
It's gonna be the best.
But we were able to secure the Jefferson Theater.
Yeah.
And they're gonna play in.
The front porch.
The front porch, yeah.
The Jefferson.
Yeah. Susan's doing a great job.
I mean, it's gonna be amazing.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're super excited about it.
Yeah, it's gonna be, seriously, guys.
Are you tearing up?
No, but they will be hearing from me.
Yeah.
Balls to the wall between now and February twelfth.
Do we have time for Waynesboro numbers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you get any sizzle reel there? Right there, please.
And cut out my commentary.
Your commentary is needed and included. I I'm seriously gonna go balls to the wall on this.
Yeah, I I'm I'm.
You know, I'm going to.
I know that. I'm excited and I know you can do it. And and I I.
We raised six hundred bucks for Michael Payne in eighteen minutes.
Yeah.
Now, city councillors can't get free tires from voters. By the time you texted me that, we had already raised the money.
I know that.
Oh, you know, I was trying to do a good thing.
I know. Everybody was a beautiful thing.
Yeah.
What you really should be trying to do is change the law at the state level so they can actually.
Get tires.
Get tires.
Yeah.
So Michael Payne actually can get a living wage to do his job.
Because we weren't even like giving him the money.
Yeah, you can't.
It was to buy tires.
You can't. It's illegal.
Yeah.
Can't do it.
Well, we found out in the middle of it.
I know that. I'm feverishly texting you. No, 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 no.
He had to release a statement.
I know that.
Did you see it?
I I I know because I was feverishly texting.
Right. And and then I guess the lesson learned is is not say that you don't have.
The lesson learned, anything political, X Smith first.
Yeah, or or not saying the dais that you need money for spare tires.
Well, yeah, but, you know, I think the world of Michael. He was.
You know, I do too.
He was trying to.
Make a point that he's human and normal and an everyday guy.
He was trying to articulate something and unfortunate, and and it was just a beautiful thing, right?
Sure.
Without a doubt, it was a beautiful thing. Unfortunately, you know.
It backfired.
It backfires. Yeah, I mean, when I sit down with elected officials to have a conversation, I don't even buy them a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, you had, you had the Almarle Commonwealth's attorney, Jim Hinchley, offer him a hundred dollars. You had Tanisha Hudson offer a hundred.
No, it wasn't Commonwealth. That was Mr. Robert, uh, Dr. Roberts, Dr. Richardson.
No, no, and Jim Hinchley on Twitter came out and said, I'll give you a hundred dollars. And he knew Roger Voisinay offered him a hundred bucks. The former city manager, Dr. Richardson. When you saw Richardson offer a hundred bucks, did you get a chuckle?
No, I just.
You got a chuckle.
No, I did not.
Quentin Beckham offered him money. And then Quentin Beckham had to convert the donation to, uh, to burgers and bourbon.
I think it was just bourbon.
I think he said it was beef and bourbon. Yeah.
I think it was just bourbon. Yeah, and it's just, I I it is, warms the heart to see that, right? But where does it stop, right? And and there's a whole reason for that, right? You know, it but, you know, nobody wants to 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 be looked at as if they were uh, buying favors from their elected officials. The real answer here is, you know, and just to go, the the Sally Hudson's vote last year ended up at a tie tie in state. One vote over and it would have happened. So literally, it failed because it was in a tie, a tie vote. You know, maybe Sally should try it again. I know she didn't do it this go around. Um, maybe next year or or the next, this next, next thing. But, you know, these folks, and I know this because I just, I see them and I.
She's coming up for reelection, isn't she?
That could be. I haven't tracked it.
Those are two year terms, aren't they?
Uh, Neil might have a better beat on me on this. But I think, you know, and then Tony was being a gentleman on that stuff, but, you know, somebody like, you know, I I mean, I was Ned Galloway is my vice chair on the Regional Housing Partnership and and, you know, I I literally spend hours a week talking to him about that. And that's just one thing. And I think a lot of people don't understand, right? So what, let's say, Michael Payne, just to pick an example of that. So he's on, he's a city councillor, right? He sits on two bodies that I am part of, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission and the Regional Housing Partnership. Just to read the packages every meeting is hours of work. Not just to read them. That's not engage.
That's not even being at the meetings.
That's not being at the meetings.
And that doesn't even include the city council meetings.
That's what I'm talking about. Just those two things. And each one of these, and again, Tony's being far too kind to himself. He's also on the on the Planning District Commission meeting, right? And so what these folks do is they get attached to all these different meetings and all these, and that's not including one on one inter conversations with with constituents. That's not trying to push whatever they, whatever they're doing. That's just trying to function. And it's a ton of hours. And but Tony was right. So like in Richmond, for instance, um, you know, they have staff. And the beautiful thing about staff that's appointed to each one city council member, there's an institutional memory as as elected's role. And I have a true, um, true story about that. Um, oh, God, I've forgotten, um, Senator, state senator, House, House of Representatives, um, ten years ago, twelve years ago. Come on, Neil, help me out. Um, it'll come to me in a minute. My passport expired.
Oh, Periello.
Periello, thank you.
And he was congressman.
He was congressman.
You've told me that story so many times.
Yeah.
That's creepy that I'm able to decipher that it was not a state senator and was a congressman and knew who you were talking about. We spent too much time together.
So I won't tell the story.
Entirely too. No, no, it's a good story.
I'm gonna eat Oreo cookies. I want to tell the story.
It shows why he got elected. And not only got elected, he got elected in a, in a, in a bleeding Republican district. And it's because of tactics like that.
But the point was, is when I reached out to him, he turned me on to his assistant.
Yeah, and you got your passport.
And I got my passport in twenty four hours.
Yeah. And you got to go where you, where you, you had to go to Europe, right?
I had to go. Yeah, my father-in-law passed away. I couldn't get to Europe because my passport.
Periello helped you out.
Without doubt. Without doubt. Think I think the world of that man. He did, you know, he saved my family and I from a problem.
Yeah.
Made it happen. Twenty four. But the point was, is this, he didn't know how to do it. His staff did.
Yeah.
And his staff, he's, and that particular, uh, person's been there through multiple congressmen. But anyway, I got on my high horse on that.
Well, and that's the problem. That's the problem in Charlottesville when you have no deputies, no city manager, no attorneys, no neighborhood development services person, no human resources person, is you literally have a local government with no institutional memory. I mean, from an executive standpoint.
Yeah, that's a tough thing.
From an executive standpoint, the most seasoned, tenured executive of there might be communications director Brian Wheeler, and he hasn't even been on the job that long.
No, no, no. And but the staff I'm talking about is not department heads. These are staff members.
Admins.
That are admins to the individual or or series of of, uh, and and some of that, if that was around, some of that would help Michael, right? So Michael could have a conversation with the staff. Hey, can I do this? Can I not do this? What can I do? What can I do? You know, can you help me with this? But what happens with these guys is, you know, again, the two boards that Michael's on that I'm part of, he's on his own. And 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 he's a smart guy because I'll get a phone call, not because he's calling me, but he says, look, I don't quite understand this. Can you help me through this? Right? So we help each other. But if there was a staff member or something, that would help him through that, through that, through that process. But anyway, I don't think it's gonna happen, but.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna happen.
Makes sense.
It would make sense. It seems like common sense. From the business world, it would happen. At the local government level, it's not gonna happen.
I have two assistants that just, plus my wife, that takes care of me, and they still can't do it.
And they still can't do it.
And but that's me. That has nothing to do, that's me being, me having, me being me.
You're a busy guy.
Other side, other side of the mountain. Uh, so following up on this, uh, report that came out of this article that came out in Realtor Magazine, how number two was Charlottesville place retired, number three was Waynesboro. or this article that came out in Realtor Magazine, how number two was Charlottesville, place retired, number three was Waynesboro.
Let's set the stage for those that are just watching. Realtor Magazine had a report this week that the city of Charlottesville was the second most popular, Charlottesville metropolitan area was the second most po- popular metropolitan area in the nation for retirees to move to. Shockingly, the Waynesboro metropolitan area was number three in the nation for retirees to move to. That means we have an influx of retirees, people with money coming to the Charlottesville metropolitan area and to the, uh, Waynesboro metropolitan area. Those are obviously, I said on the show, because I learned from you, that they're obviously complementing each other here. Where maybe you have retirees who wanna come to Charlottesville and central Virginia, who get sticker shock of that, hey, Waynesboro's close enough and we can still enjoy Charlottesville and central Virginia, so they pick Waynesboro.
So in the county of, of Augusta County.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, eight hundred and ninety-six units sold, twenty nineteen, eight sixty-one, that's up thirty-five units. Days on market, eight and twenty, twenty-five in nineteen. That's.
Eight days on market.
That's down seventeen. Price point, um, this will, will rock your world, uh, two sixty in twenty. When it take a gander, what was in nineteen?
Pretty close to two.
Two thirty.
Two thirty. So an extra thirty K. So what is that, twelve, thirteen percent?
Roughly.
That's shocking. That is shocking.
And that's interesting. That's both single-family attached and, and, and attached. And over in that market's a little different because when you say attached here, you kinda think townhomes. Over there, they're duplexes.
Okay.
So they're kinda really like single-family. That's the reason I didn't separate them out. And there's, the, the new construction over there is kind of anemic. It's not anemic. It's in the low twenties and thirties. It's units, it's, it doesn't really skew the numbers. So I kinda packed that in there. Uh, but in Waynesboro, so I broke it out purposely of Augusta County and the city of Waynesboro. City of Waynesboro, actually, some of the numbers went the opposite direction.
Interesting.
So, uh, twenty twenty, there was four hundred and twenty-five units sold.
Uh-huh.
In nineteen, four fifty-three. So there was actually eight units less sold in twenty versus.
How about the price point?
Uh, price point went up though. That, that was substantial.
How much?
Um, days on markets were pretty flat, only eight, eight days up. Went from ten to eighteen.
So that's nothing.
Uh, good call on the pricing. Two sixteen in twenty, one seventy-nine.
Damn. One seventy-nine to two sixteen?
So that's thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
That's a lot.
That's a big jump.
That's a huge jump.
That's a big jump.
And, and I would expect that jump to get more as more bars and restaurants come over there.
Yeah.
And they're coming.
Well, I got my boots on today because I'm going on the other side of the, uh, of the mountain to walk property this afternoon.
You should get a, uh, a beer at Basic City.
Yeah.
Basic City Brewery.
So there's all kinds of data and all this kinda great stuff.
City's amazing. If you guys have not been to Basic City.
But, uh, you know, it, there's a reason for that. And so when you're, when you're can buy a home over there for two sixty, you're just driving, right? I mean, we talk about, I hate the term, but.
But the drive-to-you qualify is maybe not as big of an issue with the work-from-home situation. If you can work from home, the drive-to-you qualify is not an issue. If you can work from home with the, with super fast internet, how's that an issue? The drive-to-you qualify. We're eating Oreos now for that, those that are, don't get the visual. They're only, they're listening to podcasts on Spotify, iTunes, Apple Podcasts.
And hear plastic going.
This, yeah. So I got that complaint the other day about you.
What's that? A complaint?
Be, I actually did. You wanna hear it?
Uh.
The only reason I bring this.
So, so is it complaint or, or, or constructive?
Constructive feedback.
Got it.
So a, a ton of the people are not watching visually. They're Bluetooth-ing into the car.
Uh-huh.
Or they're listening like Spotify.
Got it.
Like our friend Matthew Gilliken listens, listens that way.
Mm-hmm.
So when they don't see what's going on, they just heard you chewing bagels.
Oh.
While I was talking. And that's what, um, three people said.
Well, I apologize.
On the Bagel Show, we don't know what's happening. We're just listening. And we heard Keith for fifteen minutes eating a bagel. Literally, that's what I heard. And you know, I, I should've, I should've thought about that. That's not on you. That, I should've made that suggestion.
Just, I'm gonna go cry. I apologize.
But we didn't think about it. You should've.
No, but we won't, we will, we will fix that. I apologize.
Or we just step back or maybe what we do is this, if we eat the bagel, it didn't go.
Yeah. Got it.
You're a good point, right?
That's freaking awesome point. You know, look, this is show one hundred and thirty-one, I think.
Right.
Everyone I learn. So thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, it's, um, it's, yeah.
Makes sense?
Yeah, totally makes sense. Now my wheels are turning. I do that regularly.